The council work session together, the tour. Have a discussion with City Manager Smith about the budget.
Yes, Council President, members of the council. We made it about halfway through potential revenue sources that we've looked at. And so I'm going to start there and then we'll walk through that and then at the end we talk about kind of next steps, what we might do from now moving forward. So I'm going to quickly go through these first. We talked about some of the surveying, different things. So, let me go back here just to... So, this is again the kind of the starting point where we started. This was our adopted budget on the left, the yellow column. The green column is what I'm calling a status quo budget. I did change it a little bit from what I showed last time in that there's about 150,000 of potential cuts to materials and services that the staff came up with that I'm not showing in this status quo. So the number at the bottom is a little larger by about that amount than what we talked about last time as far as the gap in between. And so I want to show that in a picture of a variety of other potential solutions. But again, this restores, this removes the loan proceeds from a short-term standpoint. We talked about resource funding for the part-time library positions, funding for the coordinator position, and then resource the council budget. And then, in a separate box there is the potential for three new officers. So, the next potential source of revenue, we talked about this one a little bit, would be some sort of utility fee, whether it's police, public safety, parks and recreation. This is something used by large numbers of cities across the state. Probably the most used target of those funds is public safety. Some are general public safety, some are police, some are fire. But that general area that there are some parks and recreation, there's stormwater, other uses. So, we don't currently have any of these. A plus on these is it's flexible, can be targeted at different types of activities. Requires council action. A negative, again, continuing increase of utility costs. Now, the yield, each dollar of a fee generates about $72,000. And so then it would, you know, a $5 fee or some other amount, you can kind of go from there. So, the next one is another one we talked about. Clint presented his budget, increasing planning and zoning fees. Currently, we're much lower than our costs and we're also much lower than most of our comparable cities. So, positive is better cost recovery for the services we're providing. Also, this hasn't been increased for over 20 years. And then, negative, could it discourage development or other things in relation to that activity? The yield, what Clint proposed is approximately $80,000 a year increase at the levels that he proposed. Then, another one that we talked about before is a potential franchise fee on water and sewer. Currently, there's not one. Positive is flexible. Could argue it's fair to other utility providers and it also could be instituted by council action. The negatives, again, this just is an increase in utility costs to the residents. But on the amount that this could potentially generate, each percent would generate approximately 100,000, 102,000. So, those are some things to look at as far as franchise fee. Business licenses, we currently have none. We, the positive, the council could institute this. Would also give us a potential better understanding of what actual business activity is going on in the community. Negatives, could discourage business activity, could have a proportionally negative impact on small business and it's difficult to estimate necessarily what it would generate. These are the assumptions, 400 businesses at 500 a year would be approximately $200,000. Now, this one got a rave review when I brought it up the last time, but I just wanted to show you some potential revenue. So, currently, no sales tax. And this, what I'm, the numbers that I'm showing you here, to the best of my ability, this would exempt all food and prescription drug sales from the sales tax. Plus, it could tax some non-residents of the city. It's estimated, to the best of our ability again, that about 50% of sales in the city are to non-city residents. And this would maintain still more than a 7% difference in the sales tax. If we're to, if you're to put it, if you're to estimate at 1%, that's about 7% difference to the tri-cities. Each of theirs is over 8. 8.7, 8.8, 8.9, I think is the current levels. Negatives, it's difficult to estimate. It's a estimate, it's a really new concept for our community. Not a new concept around the country, new concept for us. And again, lots of assumptions that we can't really, you know, that are difficult to make. But approximately a million, over a million and a half dollars a year at a 1% sales tax. On what we estimate is happening in the city limits. Local fuel tax is another option that we looked at. Currently, none, no local fuel tax. Positive, it could replace or preserve franchise fees for the general fund, which is kind of a part of one of the other options that we talked about earlier. But the negatives, frankly, gas tax is a dwindling revenue source for the state. So, not sure we want to buy into a revenue source that continues to go down, especially as we look at more and more electric vehicles, things like that. Would require a vote of the people to institute it. And there is a spending restriction. It could only be spent on streets and roads, things within the right of way. But, like I said, that could replace, you know, allowing more franchise fees to stay within the general fund. The yields, just an assumption of a 5 cent per gallon tax is about 125,000 a year. And again, none of this takes into account, you know, are people going to shop less or more with an additional 5 cents? Now, these are some other revenue sources that are available to the city. We did not consider them viable enough to really do a lot of digging into them. A marijuana tax. I think initially, when this came to be, there was a lot of potential upside on the revenue. With Major 110, it really has restricted the state funds that are available under this. The city could still have a 3%, I think that's the cap right now for local taxes on marijuana. The negatives would be, it has a vote of the people, would require to institute it. Difficult to estimate and, you know, there's a lot of debate about whether you're forcing people to the black market with a higher price of, you know, the market materials. Local option property tax levies, positive, they're pretty stable. But the negatives, that would require a vote of the people. They would be subject to compression. So that would mean if, let's say, we did a 30 cent per thousand tax, we would probably net 25 cents. You know, we could do some estimating with the help of the county, but again, you don't get all of it because it's within that $10 general government tax and you would not get all of the rate that way. And that would impact other agencies as well as our own compression. Then, and the operational levies are at five years and have to be renewed. And if you do it for a project, for example, maybe go 10 years, but for a capital. Then, another negatives, we already, we already have pretty high property taxes. So, that's just going to put more pressure on that. Again, with compression, it's a little less pressure because we can't go too much higher than what we already are. Payroll tax, positives, it's good tax for non-city residents that use city services when they come to work. Negatives, very hard to estimate. Could it discourage development within the city? And then, would it likely get referred to voters like it did in Salem? And then get voted down by a very strong margin. So those are the three that we didn't really look at, kind of what the numbers might be because they were so hard and really difficult to say that I could feel good about recommending it. So, might, maybe want to, any questions on some of those before we go into kind of what I'm thinking? Or what I'm going to recommend kind of going forward? Any other, any questions on those revenue sources?
Yeah, on the sales tax. Technically, is it illegal?
Yes.
Is that something we really want to be, I mean, how many, do we, are, is there any?
There are three, there are three cities in the state that have a sales tax on prepared food only. So, they're all coastal cities. I remember all of them off the top of my head, but they're, they're three. Ontario, a couple of years ago, attempted a more general sales tax. It got referred to the ballot and got voted down. I was talking to the city manager that was there in Ontario, he's not there anymore. And they did make some gains, because it's been on the ballot multiple times in Ontario. You know, they have a lot of traffic across the border from Idaho. Little bit similar to us, but not, not quite. And so, you know, he felt like maybe with a better public relations campaign, they might have been able to do a little better. But they got kind of behind the ball on that. So, anyway, those are the cities that I know of that have really made an attempt or have one in some form.
So with that, you could target things?
You can, we, yeah, we could, you could write it to leave out food and, you know, like I'm saying, prescription drugs, so that, you know, we're trying to be, you know, the basics are, you know, left out of that tax and are not impacted. So it's more of a, kind of a consumption tax. And the reason I brought up the 7% difference, you know, we do get people, I think, coming down to buy a, you know, a large purchase here from out of the tri-cities. 7% still a huge difference as far as that would go. I don't think that may not impact people as much as you might think. But I just wanted to point that out.
Just have a few thoughts on a couple of them. I think I'll flesh out more of my thoughts when we get to more into decision-making. But more, just in general thoughts, I think merit of community conversation is around cannabis tax and kind of where we're at now. I do think, to a certain extent, it's a missed opportunity. There are, there's already cannabis stores in the state. And so, I know that it's said about black market, but I think people are going to the black market right now without having something to go to unless they're just going to Benetton or another neighboring city. So, I think that would be, for me, I would like to, at some point, maybe have a community conversation. I feel like when the laws have passed, or a few years ago, even the federal government and other states are kind of moving in a different direction, or I guess, moving in the direction of having that more legalized. And so, I think maybe at some point, for our community to have a conversation on that because the people that are using that are going to use that regardless, in my opinion. And I think at some point, it'd be good to capitalize on some of that. Now that being said, that doesn't mean that there's going to be, I feel like, 10 stores in Hermiston. I feel like that would have to be a community conversation. Or it would be, I guess, much like the sales tax that we're talking about. Customizing it, I guess, to the way that we would want to hear. So, again, I think that's just a conversation that we need to have because I understand the argument on a moral standpoint. But at the same time, if that's happening already and it's been happening already, I think it's a conversation that we should start having, especially when we find ourselves in situations such as a shortfall.
Well, in looking at that, while I understand what you're saying, the other side of it is, is that the citizens of Hermiston at this point in time have said that there is, you know, it's a no-go. There are no sales of it allowed inside the city. So regardless of whether we want to have a tax on it or not, there has to be a change of city policy or city ordinance, the law, that would really allow for that to occur in the first place. Whether or not that would be successful or not, I don't know what to say at this point. But again, you know, it's a conversation that would have to be had prior to anything more.
Exactly, a community conversation. I don't think that's a decision for the council to make, especially once the people have already made that decision. I think that's a community conversation to have, not a decision for the council.
Yeah.
More than just the community, is that county conversation?
Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Smith, moving forward.
So, when I started this out last meeting, my, my thoughts were that we need to establish what we think the gap is. So, I'm, I'm putting forward that that's nine, approximately $900,000 to get back to a status quo plus 370 to get to three new officers, which is what we had the budget discussion about. So, those are, that's, those are the gaps we're trying to fill, if we're trying to fill it in some way. So, and not a if, that's a, have to fill it some way. So, in an effort to try to do some outreach to the public and have a conversation about what those options could be. What I'm recommending is that our next, prior to our next council meeting, which will be November 27th, we host a budget town hall from 5:30 to 7:00. We also release an online survey with some opportunities at the town hall to take the survey. We do some open house, kind of just information, staff shares information with people as they come. Starting at 6:00, we then kind of do a more formal presentation of what's kind of on the table and then take comments, questions for a bulk of the time. And then, these times can be adjusted if you want to make more time for public comment, things like that. It's just one idea. But the recommendations that I'd like to put forward as be the start of the conversation, again, the challenge with trying to look at what this looks like in one year and then projecting into the future, there's so many variables unless we decide on, you know, these are the things we want to at least look at first, then it's kind of hard to get started and have a meaningful conversation. So, first from a, on the cut side, the, one of the first options we talked about last time was to, you know, by choice, the council had allocated a third of franchise fees to go to the street fund to help, you know, kind of do our street program. This would lower that 33% to 10% and that means leaving an additional $340,000 in the general fund for franchise fees. That's not any new revenue, that's changing the direction of the revenue that we already have. So it's a cut to the street program that is a benefit to the general fund. The other is the staff proposed cuts of approximately 150,000. Again, that is, none of those are staff positions, those are all materials and services. So contracts or things that we might buy or not buy, those types of things. And the four, the five areas that I would propose that we look at revenue changes. The planning department fee update, approximately 80,000. Increase in the TRT by 1%. And that again is impacting mostly people who don't live here for $100,000. Adding a business license fee at an average of $250 per business. Now, we've seen a lot of cities, they do it based on employee numbers, so you're impacting the smaller businesses less than you are, you know, that they have lower fee than someone who has a lot of employees. So, that's what we proposed, some sort of a schedule that would average about 250 per business. That's 100,000. Public safety fee at $5 a month. This is a community investment in public safety and that's about 360,000. And then, we, like I shared with the council, we were awarded the COPS grant funding. And 125,000 is a third of that, and I just used a round number. It would be, it doesn't have to be all at one time, I'm just trying to give us a number to work with. And it's a three-year grant, we would have five years to spend it. So, recognizing difficulty can be to hire and those types of things. We would have five years to spend the COPS grant. So here is taking that same budget and making the changes that I've outlined. It gets us to about $170,000 in the plac with this recommended budget, with those additional funds, with the cuts and the changes that we'd outlined to get to status quo. Now, I can go back. And just kind of questions, comments, discussion?
Same, Mr. Smith. Thank you for your presentation and the recommendations. I didn't want to steal your thunder earlier with what recommendations that you were going to propose or what the city was going to propose. And having a conversation also earlier, I think it was a great way for me to be able to understand all of the details of what you were fleshing out here today. Each tax, I believe, or each revenue source, I think is well thought out. Comes from different perspectives, different standpoints at TRT, like you mentioned earlier, would really affect more visitors rather than our residents. It's going to make sure that we have increased revenue from people coming out of town. The funding department adjustments, as Mr. Spencer presented a few weeks ago, a few council sessions ago, I believe that's a really great way of trying to capture the revenue that needs to be captured while trying to just update some scheduling fees that we just haven't had. I believe you mentioned that those fees haven't been updated in over three decades.
Yeah, at least 20 years.
20 years. I'm really proud of the administration's work with the COPS grant. Also, having a couple budget committee members here as well that also are very knowledgeable with the COPS grant. So I'm really pleased that this is where we're at today. That being said, I know the public safety fee, all of this being said and done, is still going to be more of an assessment on all citizens. And that being said, I believe it's an absolute priority. I think this is something that we absolutely need to do to ensure that we have public safety in our community. And the last one is the business license for me. I, at first, was kind of struggling to more or less think of, I guess, take a stance or an opinion on this one. But I think it'd be good to have it to account for all the businesses that we have in the city. I think as of right now, we have no actual knowledge of how many businesses are in the city. Neither us, and I don't want to speak for the city, neither us, and I don't want to speak for the chamber 100%, but I find it hard pressed for them to have every single member or every single business that's in the city. I think that's a pro that we can have, is to know all the businesses in the city. And not only that, but just have something uniform that all, every other city, as far as I know, has as well. We're a unique city that doesn't have a business license. But that being said, I think for the discussions that we're having here today, I think it would be prudent of us to move forward with these. I certainly am interested in hearing council discussion about this, but thank you for your presentation, I fully support the four options that you have presented.
Ms. Peterson?
I had reservations initially regarding the business tax. However, knowing that, because, you know, we have a lot of one and two people businesses in town, and those are the seeds that turn into bigger things. And we've seen them, we have the starting ship that came with the Sherrys at times, and it's still here. And so those started as those small things, and so we want to protect those, and so keeping that in mind, and also showing that, you know, being able to say, okay, in Hermiston, here are the different, you know, ideas that are coming out of Hermiston. I think that's a selling point right there, because that's something that we can tell others that are coming to this region, that, you know, we are a place of ideas. And also being able to keep track of these things as much as we can. I, you know, once, I'll be honest, I had a little starter sewing business of my own at one point. I did, couldn't sew fast enough, I'll be honest. But, you know, it would be nice to then, you know, because then you can put those individuals in touch with, it's like the Chamber of Commerce, which is an incredible resource, but unless we know those businesses are out there, we can't reach out to them. And then they can become bigger. So what they start out as, you know, a fee, ends up becoming, you know, a line out to them, and also gives us a chance of, you know, keeping track of how Hermiston is growing. So as long as we outline, yes, okay, here's this, but here's what you're going to get out of it, and here's what Hermiston is going to get out of it, I think is important. And yeah, we need to raise revenue, and that means the growing pains of becoming a growing city means that we have to grow the revenue. But I really appreciate, I know that the staff and all of the departments had to dig deep, and, you know, everything got compelled, and I know that was a ton of work, and so I really appreciate how everything was put together. So this is going to make for a really interesting community conversation, I don't afford to hear whatever everyone else is saying.
The business licenses, that is a topic that has been brought up over the years absolutely countless times. And I think now is our time to do, we never ever have one, we have really no way of knowing, you know, what the city has to offer. And I think that now might be our time to, you know, do something like that, I would rather see something like that than I ever had wanted, any type of challenge. A public safety fee, yeah, I'm sorry, that I think has to happen, because we have to have some more resources for that.
For those in the audience that maybe this is your first time joining us and we're having this conversation, know that it's an item that we have been studying since earlier this year, and we've been fortunate enough to be able to hear from each of the department heads to look at their budgets, to see where maybe reductions could be made. So this is not a discussion that we're just having for the first time ever. It's, I think it's a culmination of all the different presentations, and now we get to kind of make a decision or at least have a discussion on where we want to, what we want to support. I think it's important to know that as a city council, we have wrestled with the fact that whatever we decide is going to impact people's pocketbook. It is something that cannot be avoided, because everything, all the costs go up, we see that at the grocery store, we see that with gasoline, we see that everywhere. So it is not a decision that we are taking lightly, we simply need to be able to have the funds to be able to staff the programs that the city currently offers. And so I also appreciate you giving us the opportunity to look at some of these things that we, I think many of us wrote down already in our notes, and some of these things that you are recommending are not anything new that we haven't heard, because I think most of us were considering as the presentations were given for the business tax, the public tax, the TRT. And so as much as it pains us to increase, see any increases for our community members, but we realize that we are at a point where we've got to bring in more revenue, otherwise cuts, further tax, or further cuts will need to be made. And I think as we explain this when we have the town hall meeting, hopefully people will be able to understand how we got here, and be able to give us feedback as to what kinds of things that they would also support. I'm interested in being there, to be able to listen to the community members, and this is also a call for our community members, whoever's listening, or however it may be highlighted in the news, we want to hear from everyone, young, older, retired folks, because this is going to affect us. So I would encourage people to come to that town hall meeting, share your concerns, provide us with feedbacks, and we'll be able to listen, and once we get the feedback, we will be able to have further discussions as to what our community members have said. So we want to hear you loud and clear, and we encourage you to attend that night, it's going to be on the 27th, you said?
That's what I'm proposing, if council has some other ideas, I'm open to those, but...
I think it's wonderful that we take it back to the community to see what they will say. So thank you for allowing this to happen, and I certainly look forward to hearing from the community members.
Well, I've been around for a while, probably too long, but I remember Major 5 and 50 that has really played havoc in the state of Oregon for many years, and has never gotten resolved the way it needs to be. So, you know, so we have to come up with something to level things out, and it's not an easy decision, but it's something that has to be done to make sure that we keep everything on a even basis. So I think we've studied, but I think the input from the community, the 27th, will give us more additional input to where we make a final decision on some of these things. But, yes, so, you know, there's, like we were talking about, the decisions that the manager, about some of the things that not just the state puts on us, but other agencies, EPA, you know, things that it's going to cost us money, whether we want it to cost us or not, because we're required to do it. They put the headlines on us, when that has to be done, and it can't, you know, we can't expect some of those types of projects that our staff can be actively involved in it just because of the nature of the project. So I think it's those things that we have to work around, and, you know, that we don't have any options on those things, they don't ask us whether we'd like to, you know, pay out a couple hundred thousand dollars for this or not, they just said that you're required, basically. And so that's, and hopefully there'll be some things, I'm never too sure about what the legislators are going to do for us, you know, and so that's something that's never been able to depend on as far as how that goes, so. But I appreciate staff working on this, their films and all that, we've heard all of these different reports, and so we know that there's something that needs to be done, and we're going to have to do it, come hell or high water, okay?
So, my turn. Just in, from my perspective, I am not a fan of having to raise anything on people. You know, how we got here is, it's important to keep in mind, but at the same time, we're here, so we've got to fix what we've got. I do appreciate the fact that you've brought forward some options for us, some are definitely less palatable than others, there's no way, shape, or form that that's not true. I've always been a proponent of us having a business license, not tax. I was mentioned as a tax law, it's business license fee. So, but, you know, and obviously the raising of the planning fee is something that is well beyond its need, it's been needed for some time, and unfortunately, we have not done that. And then, again, I am not wanting to put any more onto our citizens than I absolutely have to, but the assessment fee for parks and state public safety is probably one of the, not necessarily less palatable, but it is, it's, you know, it's one of those that we can, I can stand behind and say this, you know, that we, this is something that we're going to probably, we're going to have to do anyway. Because, you know, I was, I'll be, you know, I will say, let me get go, you know, when the budget was brought forward with the cuts, or with, you know, with the deficit in it, and we were told that, you know, in addition to this, you know, we're, that it had the other three officers that were, had not yet been approved of on the budget, and the tough decision for me was to say that those would have to be put on hold. That was a very, very difficult decision for me to make, because, you know, as close to law enforcement as I am associated, the same note of that is just, it just ripped my guts out. But at the same time, I owe a debt to the city, who has chosen for me to represent them, you know, to stand behind some of those decisions. So I think that you presented us with some good options, and I do believe that the ones that you presented should be looked at and fleshed out a little bit more and presented. I do suggest though, that, or it may be in our best interest, instead of having the town hall here, that we move up to EOTC for that meeting, just in the event that we have more people than we have room. And so, you know, whether or not that's going to work, I don't know, but I'm just throwing that one out there, is that if we're going to do both on the same day, that we probably should do so in a venue which everybody will have room to be able to get in and voice their opinion, because I, for one, just as I've heard pretty much everybody here say, I want to hear what everybody has to say about this. I know that nobody wants to pay them, obviously, but, you know, tough decisions. So I would just as soon have everybody's hear what everybody has to say before I say yes or no.
And just to kind of, I didn't go over the kind of the overall schedule of this meeting, but the idea would be to have that town hall meeting the end of the month, and leave the survey open maybe until the middle of December, and then we bring back the results of, kind of, collate all of that, bring it back at our first meeting in January, or right thereafter first of the year, and have that final discussion about what do we do going forward from that point. We wouldn't be asking for any decision until we got to that point in January, but kind of just seeking feedback and kind of then putting it together to talk about it finally.
Ms. Anderson?
I just have one very short one, that is, when we're making these decisions, we're making them for our neighbors, and by neighbors, I mean my neighbor here, and my neighbor here, because I know that my neighbor's going to have to pay this, whatever decision I make, my neighbor's going to have to pay this, my neighbor's going to have to pay this, because we all live here. So, and it's going to impact us in the same way, so it's not an impersonal decision, we're all in this together, and we are all trying to, we were voted to, you know, be that voice for the community, trying to make our community what we all want it to be, and sometimes that means making those really hard decisions, and we're making it because we want that community to be awesome, and to be a safe place. And I know that whatever decision we make, it's going to impact my neighbor and my neighbor. And when I go to get my mail and I see, you know, my neighbor get their power bill, I'm going to feel the fact that if their power bill went up because of a vote I made, I'm going to feel that, and we go home knowing that. But it was a choice that we made to understand and carry with us when we decided to take on this role, and there is never a minute that we don't take it seriously. We are taking on this role as representatives of our neighbors. So that is who we're here for. And it's not an easy thing, it's a very hard thing, but it is a thing we do by choice, because someone has to do hard things. We don't get wrong, it's a worthwhile thing, but it is a hard thing.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Spencer?
Well, I'm not asking for a vote, because we don't vote in these, but it sounds like everybody's comfortable with us using these numbers to kind of move forward and make presentations and so forth at that November 27th timeframe.
Yes, City Mayor, just a question on that presentation, is that presentation going to have all the options that you've laid out for here today, or is it going to have the four that you seem to have, we have consensus on?
Well, I will, and I have to say, I haven't completely put it all together in my head, but I would say at least mentioning that we talked about all of these other things, and this is the slate of recommendations, I think that would be my approach. Just so the people know that we didn't just, you know, just only focus on these, we looked at every option that we could find.
100%. Well, thank you very much, making sure to present all the options, because I think the reason why we chose these four has to do with all the options that were presented on the table. And I think just to maybe, I had a conversation with a councillor from Ontario, Oregon, and they had the same type of discussion about having a public safety fee, and at the end of the day, the way they look at it is, we have more officers, we're more safe in the streets. I understand, like all of us, we don't want to raise anything else, but at the end of the day, public safety is far more important, in my opinion, than to have a raise of $4 or $5. And so at the end of the day, nobody wants to be that person to raise it, but the value of safety and community safety is much higher in my book.
All right. With that, we'll adjourn until 7 o'clock.
I'm going to call the November 13th City Council Session to Order with a Declaration of Quarantine. Mayor Drutman, Councilor McCarthy, and Councilor Litten are excused. With Stu Feisler.
My pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Those of you joining us or just getting here, we had a, earlier we had a budget discussion in regards to some of the recommendations and work that's been being done on the budget so far to help with our shortfall. At this point in time, we're going to be having some more further discussion and information coming out in the near future as to where, when, and how that's going to look like. Also, there's been a change to the agenda that was originally published. It is going to include a presentation by Project PATH/Stepping Stones Alliance. And this will be heard after the Hermiston School District presentation. And, which is now, if I do leave, Mr. Bacon?
Well, good evening.
Hi, sir. What you got for us?
You're doing a great job up there with the growth.
Oh, yes.
Well. Well, things are rolling along. We finished up conferences last week. We don't have the numbers in from all the schools yet on how our participation levels were. But turnout, general feedback so far, that it was a pretty strong turnout across the district. So, we're excited to see those numbers. Enrollment, we're down thirty-three students from last month, so we're sitting right at about fifty-four hundred students as we roll into November. Calendar items that we have on tomorrow night, we're going to be hosting our second seminar for our community and for our family to be able to watch either online or in-person at Rocky Heights Elementary. And that's going to be on social media, partnership with the Cook Center. And there'll be four more series throughout the course of the year that'll be taking place on that. If anyone is interested in participating, they're welcome to jump onto our website and they can sign up. There's a registration link there. And in order to view it, if you are unable to be in-person or to watch online at that time, a link is sent out following that for folks who have registered, so you can watch it a little bit later. But it's going to be talking with parents about how to support their family with social media. And then on the Friday, this is where it gets really exciting. Dancing with the Stars is kicking off, so it'll be Hermiston High School Friday night, six-thirty. Twenty dollars for adults, ten dollars for students. We have six folks from across the district that will be dancing and just showing us all their, their good stuff they've got up there. They've been practicing, they started yesterday. Fundraisers, all fundraising will be going to local community groups. And it's a diverse group that's spread across, that each dancer selects their, what they're fundraising for. So whether it's for Kiwanis or just various organizations across the, across their community. There will not be any school on Wednesday, November twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, an observation of Thanksgiving holiday. So that's coming up here, kind of right in our face, actually. Construction at Highland Hills continues. The security wall is almost complete. Where students will be able to enter and exit, help provide a little more security for the Highland Hills facility. Those timers will be set, so the students are able to enter in the morning and exit in the afternoon. Part of it will be locked during the day, it will be closed in systems or opened up from the staff, so they can regulate who comes and goes better. So, looking forward to that being finished. Next year, when the staff return at Highland Hills, there's going to be some renovations that will begin in the spring and finish up throughout the summer, that will be reorganizing and structuring the office front a little bit, so they can support that. The exterior remodel was done, it was a two-part process, so that's where Highland Hills is with that. And, just as a reminder for families out there, the Family Income Survey is still out and out. We're collecting responses on that, and the importance of that is not to know how much everybody's making, but we are able to base our free reduced numbers and where we're able this year to provide free meals, K-12. This is what the impact of that survey, so the more folks that can fill that survey out, the better support we can provide to our families that way. So, it is important to get that done. We are, as we talked about Thanksgiving coming up, that means winter weather will be potentially approaching. I'm sure during the weekdays, it will be perfect all season long, but test calls are going to be going out to families to review the weather process, how information goes out to families, should we have to postpone or delays. And then, this last part of it, the intent is not to toot our own horn or anything of that nature, but all, but to really recognize and say thank you to the partnership that we have with our community. The Hermiston School District was recognized as a national lighthouse school system to help transfer or transform education. So, the National Superintendents Association has recognized Hermiston as a lighthouse district in the area of community partner alignment. So there are several areas that they nominate and award these recognitions to across, across the country. They are in the areas of early learners, so to become a lighthouse district, you can be recognized as early learners, community alignment, building a foundation for student success, future-ready learners, social, emotional, cognitive growth, learners as co-authors, and diverse educator pipeline. So, we were encouraged that, to put information out about this recognition. And, we are the first district in the nation to be recognized as a lighthouse district. And the focus was on our relationship with the Hermiston Police Department, the city, outdoor school, and the summer program, just to name a few of the partnerships that we have that support our, our community and our students. And without the city, we wouldn't be able to be recognized for that. And with the Hermiston community out there across the nation, we're actually going to be able to present at the national conference and be recognized in February, so we're able to take Hermiston, not just in our region, but across the country. And that's because of the relationship between the school district and our city partners. So, thank you guys for being a part of that.
Well, Mr. Bacon, it's a disappointment that he didn't have more to say tonight.
Do you want me to turn over? I was just reading the crowd, so I was trying to...
That's a, that's a whole lot of stuff going on. That's impressive. All the things that you have going on in, in the next little bit. So, I am, I am excited to see Dancing with Stars coming up here. Where's that being held up again?
It'll be at the high school in the auditorium.
At the auditorium?
Doors open at six-thirty, dancers take the stage at seven.
Be there, be square, boys and girls. It's a great opportunity to, to help support your community. And again, work on that, if you can, put that, that pad of paper for that survey. Help them get that, the money that they need and the, or the direction that they need for helping out all of our students out there. Just a, just a thought on my, on my deal. You know, with all that you've done with the schools over the last few years, with the renovations and such, it might be a nice, not say presentation, but I mean, one of those things that'd be nice to put together where you had a before and after on, you know, where all the schools were since you guys have started building up on what we have, you know? Because I remember how, what the schools, back when I started, or when I first came to Hermiston is, you know, in high school. And, you know, all the changes that have happened since then, and pretty much everything is, is, there's, there's nothing that's the same as when I started. So, it's a, it's exciting to see all, all the changes that have been made. And that, that might be a, you know, just a thing to, you know, show the community, this is what we're doing. This is, this is how we're, we got to where we are right now.
And what the community has supported and
Correct.
through those partnerships, been able to create.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, just a thought.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron?
If I may say something, Dancing with the Stars, our school resource officer, Officer Colleen, is going to be dancing. So, just putting the plug out there, one of the members of the police department will be joining the stage. So, if you want to support Officer Colleen, I think we would like to see you there on Friday night.
Wasn't he the one that was doing the dancing on the internet here a few years back?
Yes.
Yeah. Made a, made a, made a big splash with that. Outstanding. All right. Any others? Questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Bacon? Thank you, sir. I appreciate all of the information you provided. It's great news.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Next up, presentation from PATH/Stepping Stones Alliance, Jesslyn Cole.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Jesslyn Cole with Stepping Stones. So, I believe you have in front of you our first quarter report? Yes, okay. So, I'm not going to read line by line, but wanted to give you guys a chance to ask any questions that you might have. Goes over personnel. We are still awaiting the fifty thousand dollar grant we received for transportation to purchase our vehicle for that. Construction has been moving very quickly of late, and an invitation is being passed around to you. We would love to see all of you at the grand opening house forming event on Thursday, December seventh. It will run from three to six with ribbon cutting between Hermiston and Humantilla Chambers. We are members of both. They will be doing the ribbon cutting at four, so some speeches, talks will happen around three-thirty. And then ribbon cutting at four, and then the rest will be more open house style. So you'll be able to walk around the grounds, ask questions, and just see what there is out there. And then also being passed around, we did get our brochure completed. And first printing, we have just in English, but we have gotten it translated, and next printing we'll have in Spanish as well. So we'll have one brochure in English, same information in a separate brochure in Spanish. We spent the first quarter doing a lot of community outreach, and that was throughout Echo, Stanfield, Humantilla, and Hermiston, reaching all of our communities, and we did that in multiple ways, both at community events and at different organization meetings. We also have started doing outreach to encampments that are known in the areas. And so, reaching all audiences to let people know what we are doing and how people can help or participate whenever their need may be. I appreciate Hermiston School District talking about partnerships, because we're very fortunate to partner with them as well. I've received help through their technology department, and then their next step program actually does our cleaning multiple times a week. So they come in and clean our facility for us. So partnerships are very important. Fundraising has been going and will forever continue to go. We will have some exciting things to announce in 2024, as far as fundraising goes, hoping to get a couple events off the ground. And then the final page shows some sleep center numbers for July, August, September, volunteer information. Our individual shelter units are completed and most have already been moved on-site. So, next step is getting their electrical in, so they will have a heater, an indoor or interior light, porch light, and one outlet.
Excellent. So, these, these are, these are going to have power in them as well?
Yes.
Any questions for her?
Hey, Jesslyn. A question, I looked at your invite, automatically pulled out my phone, because I wanted to see kind of what the QR code was. And so, there's like a register, is that open until, until the date of the grand opening? Or is that just for all community members, or I guess what's the goal of the registry?
It is for anyone who would like to participate in that registry. So, we tried to do kind of a housewarming idea, because we are in essence starting the kitchen for the navigation center and whatnot. So, we tried to do all levels, like you do for housewarming your wedding, and anyone could participate in that. Some of the supplies, since we've been running the sleep center for a year now, our sheets and bedding are starting to look like they've been used for a year. So, that has a lot of pillows and sheets and that kind of thing as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that they came to our faith-based meeting the other day, that we made this presentation. Appreciate that. Said at that time, too, gloves and antelopes are needed at this point. And that you're, you're still dealing with misinformation, so that's, you know, that's a, some of the tough things to get the information out. And, and you've got your navigation center is going to get put up here soon. It's got, ooh, remodeling, it's a double Y.
Yes, correct.
But you, you do have your sleep center pretty well set up, except for the, the power and all that.
Yes, so sleep center is set, and the modular building, or the double Y that will be the navigation center are set on the site. So now we're waiting electrical, and in the sleep center, we need the fire suppression put in there as well.
I think on that note, I have a follow-up question. I mean, knowing it's, it is certainly controversial topic when we're talking about this. When talk, or controversial things usually come up, there's usually misinformation that's there. What's some of the most common misinformation that you've heard? And I guess, is there anything you can tell us right now to clear someone out?
I've heard rumors, ideas, that people are being bussed into the community for the purpose of getting the individual shelter units. And I can say that we are not seeing that population, so if that is the case, they're not making their way to the sleep center. The majority of the guests we have either stay a night and move on out of the community, or are from the area, have family in the area, graduated from here, whatnot. So that's the biggest one we hear.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments? Well, I appreciate the hard work that you guys have put into this. It's, it's nice seeing it come to fruition. And, obviously, about the right time of the year for it to start really getting moving forward. So, thank you so much for, for working as hard as you have to make this, to realize this, this need, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay. Next up, we have a proclamation on Small Business Saturday. And whereas the government of Hermiston, Oregon celebrates our small businesses and the contribution they made to our local economy and community as they create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, small businesses are responsible for sixty-two point seven percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five, employ forty-six point four percent of employees in the private sector, and some economists state that with every one hundred dollars spent at a small local retailer, roughly sixty-eight dollars will stay in our local community through taxes, payroll, and donations to small, to local schools and charities. And whereas, Small Business Saturday shoppers understand the importance and recognize the impact they can make by shopping at small businesses and encouraging friends and family to do so too. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Doug Premer, Council President of Hermiston, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as Small Business Saturday. Enters the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year, signed this thirteenth day of November twenty twenty-three. As soon as I find it. Are the ones that are, that stand behind our, our community, they're the ones and that are affected the most when bad things happen and we could, so, please, please go. Support. And we, we, businesses are, and they, a little bit more, but the smaller business, they're your neighbors next door. The, the business, they're, we need them, these folks. And, make the, make, that, that, which. Okay. Listen in with our. To bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda, is asked to please do the following. Please limit your comments to not more than five minutes, state your name and address, and direct your comments to me. Is there anybody that wishes to step forward?
Hi. My name's Melissa Boylan. My address is three-two-two Northeast Marty Drive in Hermiston. And, I just wanted to voice my concern. Sorry. I, I get a little emotional, because this is my community, and my husband was born and raised here. And we raise our children and our grandchildren here, and we love this community. And, the reason we're talking, my husband and I came today was, was our concern about the five G towers that have gone in. I'm a realtor. I used to own a website company. I love technology. Like, it makes my job way easier, so I'm not anti-technology in any way. However, I am for the safety of technology, because with emerging technologies, a lot of people can promise a lot of things, but until you see the science, until you see the studies, until you start seeing the effects on people's health, sometimes that's when you get the answers, is when things start to go south. And, I, in our family, we've had a lot of, what you'd call health challenges and things like that. And so, over the years, we have, you know, implemented those things in our family. And so, in that, I have studied just a lot of things, just to be aware, because we live in a farming community. And, you know, there's all kinds of things that happen with pesticides and with Hanford, and just with all different things. Every community is unique in the challenges that they have. And, I, as a mom and a grandma, when the five G towers went up, I started noticing they're at the schools, and they're right in Highland, where we're at, right by the place that there's a tower. And, you know, our kids and the elderly are some of the most immunocompromised. They are the most fragile. And so, our question, my question is, why are they so close to the ones in our community that are so fragile? And also, my understanding too, is that we do have fast internet. We have fiber in our community. I've been using five G on my phone, and I've been using these different things, and so, why this and why now? And also, why wasn't I notified? You know, maybe there was a meeting and I missed it. Maybe there was something, you know, like that. But, I've had, you know, even clients in my real estate say, is my home value going to go down? Is this going to happen? You know, what, what, there's a lot of concern. And so, I just wanted to voice my opinion about it. I just wanted to voice my concern, because I love my community, and I want to see Hermiston grow and thrive, and be able to have technology, but in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Premer.
I'm Mike Boylan, three-two-two Northeast Marty Drive. Basically, just here to reiterate, reiterate what she said. On the stance that she mentioned, real estate concerns, I've had clients and several people asking what these are. They're popping up all over the city, and we don't know exactly where all they are, or if there's going to be more coming up, so I get concerned. Clients that ask. So I get concerned, clients that ask, is there going to be one coming up to buy my house? And what does that do to the resale value of my house? I have done a little study because this just popped up here. I just started looking into it because it just came up, I noticed this last month or two. And there are some other cities that have some challenges with these things. And there are some realtors that have devalued some properties because of these. I haven't had enough information to know what that actually is in our area. But there's definitely some people concerned about that. So, you know, the health implication is that there's not necessarily the studies that have been done that nobody has even shared or knows about. So we're almost like guinea pigs, you know, but the, you know, I did look at the one in our neighborhood and took a few photos. It does not have any warning labels on them. But I have seen in other cities and some of the stories out there that there are some warning labels on them that gives you so many feet, you need to be away from these things. And where there could right next to the playground is concerning for us. So just some things that we are concerned about for our community and the health. And also, you know, is there any say for our community about these? Or is it just something that happened?
Thank you, Ms. Boylan. Just in the Public Works Department, we didn't have any say over the matter. It was decided at the federal government level. We were not given an option. Is there a map of where these are for our city companies? US Cellular would be the one that would have that.
Just to go a little further, our last administration really wanted to push 5G and the technology. And so to make this law quicker, they cut a lot of the red tape associated with that. And some of that red tape would be some of the studies that you're concerned with and sharing today. And so because of cutting the red tape and making this technology a lot quicker, the last administration opted to cut a lot of that red tape. And this is where we're at today.
Good morning, Council. My name is Josh Roberts, 1709 Northeast Sixth Place. I was in attendance for the budget discussion. And one of the things that came out is that there might be a town hall. And I do hope that happens, as Councilor Dran said. If we have that, I hope that there is a large turnout of people from the community to weigh in with their questions. But I have some questions tonight, so if that town hall does take place, I thought maybe these are some things that could be thought about ahead of time. It was discussed several revenue generating options. One of them, for instance, was 1% sales tax. It could generate about $1.6 million a year. We have a very high tax rate right now. And so my question is, for instance, if the city only needs $600,000 to meet its vegetarian needs, that's going to leave a $1 million surplus. Can other fees for areas be cut to ease the burden on the residents here? So that we're not bringing in more than we actually need? There was talk of a marijuana tax. And it was also mentioned that that was voter-approved and there would have to be changes in the law for that to happen. One of the questions that I would have is, as a city, what do we stand for? I know that it wasn't very long ago that we said we were not going to allow marijuana sales here in the city. I'm not going to speak for the entire city. That's for the voters to do. And if it was to come up and the vote would go the other way, so be it. But I would like to see our city take a stand, one way or the other, as far as whether or not we are for that kind of business in our community. With the revenue generating options, there was talk of established quo. So if these came into effect, what would it take to just maintain our established quo? But what I'd like to hear is, what does a plan to deal with cost year after year? We know that inflation is rampant and it doesn't have any signs of slowing. And so status quo right now is good. And I'm glad to see that the city is having these discussions and looking for revenue generating options. But just maintaining the status quo is going to put us right back in the position we're in if we don't think going ahead. So sustainability is really one of my concerns. I'm delighted that the city's got a COGS grant for the police department. As Council President Primmer said, and I mirror this, it got to be to see that the city could not fund those positions just right out of hand. So the fact that we've got this COGS grant is awesome. I'm in full support of that. But I also want to see sustainability. The last thing I would want to see is that we don't forecast ahead and we end up having to lay people off because these funds dry up and we don't have the sustainability in place. Part of that sustainability, they talked about a parks fee and a public safety fee. I would anticipate those would be dedicated funding to those programs. But what I've seen in my time working with government is a lot of times at the state and federal and even local levels, when a program has funding dedicated to it, oftentimes the general fund contributions are cut out from the bottom. And so there's really no net gain to those programs. So I would advocate and would hope that the city would pledge that if these fees are implemented, that we're not going to either cut general fund dollars or withhold increases to the greatest extent possible in order to free up general fund money for other things. If we're going to support our police department and we're going to institute a public safety fee, then that fee needs to be dedicated. It cannot be used to get general fund contributions out from underneath it. There was also talk about costs associated, I'm sorry, there was talk about a business fee, a business license fee. I would ask, what are the costs associated with non-payment? Who enforces non-payment? Are there going to be any core costs with any of these fees? You know, even the one requiring vote, there were some that, besides the marijuana tax, there were several that might require a vote. Increases in revenue are great, but if they're offset by costs to implement these suggestions, then there's really no gain. And so I would like to hear what the net impact of the budget is, not just for the revenue increases, but also the costs associated with those suggestions.
Mr. Roberts? Any other public comment? Even that? Oh, got someone else, okay.
My name is Stephen Baze. I know some of you. And recently, I emailed all of the city council members in regard to the 5G that we proposed. I have some documents that you should all read, you should all be aware of. There are other municipalities all across this nation that are fighting against 5G. It's not just a bunch of looms. These are people that are concerned with their health. One of the main things is to put these towers up in, say, the public park out here in the subdivision that I live in at the end of 10th Street or Main Street. I'm kind of astonished that this is happening, actually, but obviously it is. The city council's position is that you have nothing to say about it, that the cell phone companies have looked into it and everything's fine. I can assure you, that's not the case at all. I have documents, especially one in particular, of a congressman that just recently held hearings and he questioned several of the cell phone executives if they had actually done any research into 5G for human health effects, what kind of effects it might have on human beings. And all of them, there were three of them, all of them said exactly the same thing. They said they have not spent one penny on researching any of it. They've spent no effort at all in looking into it. These are the cell phone executives. So if you're trusting those people, I think you're probably making a huge mistake. But nonetheless, that's just my view. I'm very much into health and fitness and that kind of thing. And I'm 75 years old. I survived the Vietnam War on the Cambodian border in '68, '69. And I have quite a bit of life experience. I've owned several businesses here in this town, in this community. Successful businesses, trucking and construction companies. And we worked all over this area, not just in Hermiston, but over in Tri-Cities quite a bit too. But nonetheless, I would ask all of you to look into this further, to do a little bit more research. And I will be more than happy to supply you with some of that research. So if you could just remember my name, Stephen Baze, B-A-Z-E. I live at 115 Northeast 11th Street. And you can get in touch with me and I'll be more than happy to provide you with all the information. It's very important. The whole 5G thing is definitely related to the coronavirus. Whether you know that or not, I don't know, but it is a fact. I think we all realize now that we got pretty much bamboozled on the whole COVID thing. All of us did. And I don't want to see that happen with the 5G. It seems like a huge mistake. We could stop it now or have limits on it. Or there's a bunch of things we could do. And that's basically what I would hope to press on all of you, that you do that. That you look into it. I'll be more than happy to give you the information that I have. This congressional hearing is stunning. It's absolutely stunning. And it'll change your minds if you haven't already kind of wrapped your head around that. But anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Shorbridge. I live at 756 Pheasant Avenue. And I'm here concerning the 5G towers that have gone up as well. You've heard a lot of concerns about resale values, about health effects, about the lack of research. I've spent some time trying to look into this as well, especially after seeing the towers popping up fairly suddenly and at first not understanding what they were. And so in my time of research, and I'm just an amateur researcher, but what I've been able to ascertain is that what we're really talking about isn't just wireless. This is energy we're talking about. And specifically, it's called non-ionizing radiation. And that's important to note, that what we're really talking about. The effects of microwave is very, very well-known. In high dosage, it's very dangerous to everyone. It literally cooks through people. That's what's designed for. That's what we use our microwaves in our homes for. There are certain protections to make sure that they are safe. But in the early days, that was not known. People were harmed very badly because they didn't understand the technology that they were implementing. And I believe we're in the same place at the moment with the fifth generation radiation that, the standards for the radiation that have been put out. We don't have time, we didn't have enough time to be able to conduct the type of research that was needed before the technologies have been implemented. And seeing them around our schools and in our neighborhoods. And I understand why there's so many of them. It's because they're trying to limit the amount of power. And that's because the research that has been conducted has solely been conducted on the effects of raising temperature by emitting this radiation into communities. And so in an effort to keep temperature down, that's what they've done, is they've kept the towers from being able to emit too far. But that only gives you the immediate effect, the acute effect. But what I'm most concerned about is not the acute effects, but rather the chronic effects of radiation in our community over time. I think that's something that has not been researched. In fact, all of the research in the governing bodies and the commissions, international commissions, there's four of which, they have not conducted those studies. The only thing that they've touched on is temperature. That is only one component, very small. We know that over time, microwave will, it's a carcinogen. It is a teratogen, which means it changes your genes, the expression of genes, all of that. And these are things with radiation we need to be very careful about. And having them in our communities is highly dangerous. I'm not suggesting that we know what it does. We don't know at all what it does. That's the problem. And one of the things that I have to take as a father is there are products that we can choose to bring into our homes, that we can administer to our families, including medicines. And we have to weigh the costs of that. There's always a cost. And the cost that I have to look at is, what is the benefit that I'm getting out of it versus the potential risk? And if you have a potential risk that you don't even understand what it could be. Could be safe, could be very harmful, you don't know. Does that outweigh the benefit? In this case, I feel that 5G is simply a convenience, not a necessity for life. And so when we're talking, honestly, we need to break it down into that argument. Is it really that necessary in our community or is it potentially dangerous? Now, I don't know, I have no idea what the part of the city had in bringing in 5G and the towers and all that. But what I do know is that there has to be something that can be done, or at least looked into, on behalf of the city. As the governing body of our city, we look to you to keep us safe and do the research that is needed. And we just, that's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Any others?
Mr. Smith? Did, do we have any kind of information from US Cellular in regards to the towers that they have talked about this evening?
I'm really not prepared. I wasn't prepared to try to answer any of those questions. If you'd like me to gather what information we do have, I can share that with the council.
That would be great.
All right. Consent agenda items A through G. Are there any items that need to be removed from the, by the council? Seeing none, is there any council comment? Is there any public comment on consent agenda items A through G? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G?
Someone?
Second. And by Mr. Dran, seconded by Mr. Arden. Can I get a roll call? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
And just for those of you that aren't here, every time I'm the council president, I still get a vote. Whereas the mayor doesn't. The mayor, the mayor, I guess. Okay. Nothing removed from the consent agenda. Next up, ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2296, regional water system phase-two pipeline improvements. City Manager Smith. Mr. Morgan, please.
Yes, Council President Primmer, members of the council this evening, we're asking to approve resolution 2296, which is to construct our regional water system phase-two pipeline improvements. The project, important to keep in mind, is 100% funded by the company that will be utilizing the improvements. So no city utility or general fund dollars going into the project. The project will construct approximately two and a half miles of new water main for non-potable water. Additionally, we'll construct approximately two miles of new main for carrying what we refer to as non-contact cooling water for discharge from the developments. To give you a sense of the area that we're talking about here, this is the southern industrial area of the city. It's Highway 395 over here, Highway 207 here, Walmart Distribution Center, and this is Feadville Road. So that light blue line originates here at the regional water systems treatment works. So that light blue line originates here at the regional water systems treatment works. And we'll head approximately two miles off to the east on the south side of Feadville Road, going underneath the two railroad lines, underneath the irrigation district speed canal, over to Kelly Boulevard and tying into an existing water meter on Kelly Boulevard. The non-contact cooling water discharge pipeline will head in the other direction, beginning at a point approximately here along Feadville Road, and a forced main to push it to the west until it can gravity from approximately this point to South First Street. And then heading north from there in South First Street, ultimately discharging in this red line is the Hermiston Irrigation District's A Line Canal just north of OSU Extension Service. Important to note, both of these projects ultimately are a win for the community in terms of using the water twice, both for industry and agriculture. So by discharging the water into the A Line Canal, it increases the amount of water in the A Line Canal during peak irrigation season by approximately 5%. Every gallon of water that gets discharged into the A Line Canal is a gallon of water that they can hold back for a longer period of time in Coan Springs Reservoir. That ultimately allows the irrigators within the Hermiston Irrigation District to either irrigate up to 5% more acreage, or probably more likely allow them to plant longer season, higher value crops where they can irrigate later on into the season because they've preserved water behind Coan Springs Reservoir. So utilizing the water that's inbound from the Clumby River, using it for cooling for that industrial purpose. The only thing that they're putting into the water, in theory, is temperature. They're just using it to cool their facilities and then sending it on for beneficial use by agriculture. So nice to see it getting used twice. Now, just kind of our big picture. You've seen a lot of different projects coming through over the past six to 12 months or so. So again, here's that same area. We've already completed. This dark blue line is the new potable water main that roughly follows the same trajectory as the water main that should be improved this evening. So that's been completed. Now, this evening, you'll be approving this two and a half miles of additional non-potable water main for cooling water. Additionally, this evening, you're approving a construction of this discharge line to discharge into the A Line Canal. Again, that water is not contaminated with traditional contaminants, only has temperature going into the A Line Canal. And then we've already here about three weeks ago, approved an additional project to construct sanitary sewer main where the dark green line is. And that will be carrying the traditional sewage from these facilities to the city's traditional sewer treatment works. So that's kind of the big picture. So there's ultimately four different pipelines taking place here that are in various stages of construction, all of them carrying different types of water in different directions for different purposes. So for the projects before this evening, important to keep in mind, you know, with all these different projects in an interest for various reasons, but one of which being to help encourage more participation by local contractors. You know, we could have probably done all these projects all at once as one large contract. But by breaking them up into constituent parts, not just for the piping, but also the associated pumps and motors and all those types of things, breaking them down into the smallest pieces we can gives more opportunity for the local construction community to bid on these different projects. So two pieces of pipeline that are before this evening is one package. There's good, strong response from the local construction industry. We had eight tall bids received. Projected up there are the three lowest bids with premier excavation coming in the lowest, which you can see is very competitive compared to the engineer's estimate. This has been something that we've been seeing quite a bit here these past six, eight months or so. Inflation is strongly coming down over the past 12 months or so. So it's been good to see. So with that, I would recommend awarding the contract and approving Resolution 2296.
Counsel comments?
Just a quick question. When, if this pipeline sustains any damages that, because I know this is going to be reimbursed by the business that's really, really needing this, but if this pipeline ever gets damaged, is that on the city, or is that upon the business?
Yes, so that's a good question. Because there's, like I said, four different pipelines carrying different types of water, going in different types of directions. So ultimately, the pipeline that is being constructed here, that is going to be carrying raw Klumby River water, which is non-potable water. So that will not be water that is sold by the city of Hermiston, Seatonley. So that wouldn't end up, if any damages occurs to it, would have to be recouped by the ratepayers to the regional water system, of which they are one of the very few customers on that system. So they would be paying the cost of that. On the non-contact cooling water pipeline, they will be the only customer. So we're going to have to approve a new rate specifically for their discharge. They will be the only ones that really even have the ability to discharge to that line. So any damage that were to ever occur to that line, they'd be the only ones on the hook for replacing it.
Thank you. Other comments? So again, this, just to reiterate, this is 100% funded by the user.
Correct.
It's just basically, it's a pass through for us?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so any other council comments? Are there any public comments for this? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2296 and lay it on the record?
Some.
Second.
Okay, I think I will get Mr. Baron and Ms. Myers as seconding. Can I get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes, sorry. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next up, Resolution 2297, proposed, supported, proposed, Hacienda CDC Development. City Manager Smith.
Yes. Mr. Council President, members of the council. In September, you heard a presentation from representatives of Hacienda CDC, which is a community development corporation that develops affordable housing along with a number of other programs to help people from an economic standpoint. And they're in the process of applying for state funding for this project. And they've requested a resolution of support from the council. As they go through that process, they feel like it will strengthen their application. And so that is what is before you tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Smith.
This was the group that originally came and made the presentation, correct?
Yes.
During that presentation, it was requested that they provide a list of different ways that other cities have shown the support in the past. Have they provided that?
They did. And I'm sorry, I didn't pass that on to the council, but this is one of them, and I can pass on the rest of it. There are, most of the others are a little more expensive. I'll just say that, so.
This one doesn't cost us anything, right?
Just a few minutes of your time.
We're not committed to it.
Right.
Any other council comments? Any public comment? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2297 and lay it on the record?
Some.
Second. Then moved by Counsel Peterson, seconded by Counsel Baron. Can I get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. And finally, on these, Resolution 2298, Contract Award Water Service Line Inventory. City Manager Smith.
I'll ask Mr. Morgan then after this.
Yes, Council President, members of the council. Now, we're asking to approve Resolution 2298, which is awarding a contract to conduct a water service line inventory related to lead and copper. So a few things as far as background. This is what Counsel Arden was referring to a little bit earlier as far as some unfunded mandates that come down on the utility system. So the federal EPA is requiring all public water systems in the United States to perform this service line inventory. Ultimately, it's an inventory to document the presence of lead and copper throughout the United States. Important to keep in mind that this requirement is specific to the service lines, not the public water mains themselves that are inside of the street that are conveying water to the public. These are just the service lines that come off of the main, go to a home, go through the meter, and then go into the home. So we have good documentation. We know all of the pipe materials the city has in terms of our public mains. But on behind the meter, that's questioned. It's question nationwide. And I think that's ultimately what EPA is trying to get their arms around. So that's really what all this is about, is trying to document what the scope of the issue is across the country, looking what those materials are behind the water meter. So ultimately, what this project will do, it's really a pretty simple project. It's just relatively large in scope. So what they're going to be doing is they're going to be excavating directly in front of and behind a water meter with a two-foot diameter hole in front of and behind a water meter, expose the water line that's down there, perform a scratch test and a magnetism test. And those two tests will determine the presence of lead and copper. They'll report those results, put the soil back in, cover it back up, and then we'll simply report those results back to the EPA no later than October 1st of 2024. At this point, there's no further action required. We're simply up their inventory and what it is and reporting those results to the EPA. Like I mentioned, it's relatively simple process. But when we have nearly 6,000 water meters throughout the city, even performing a simple task 6,000 times is pretty daunting. So when this directive first came out this spring, we were concerned about the scope. It's been scaled back a little bit through some additional response from EPA. One of the big components is we only have to perform this, we only have to take into consideration services that have been installed prior to 1986. And that's because post-1986, there are requirements on the types of building materials that are allowed in residential plumbing have changed to make this not a concern. So we don't have to take into account any of those. Luckily for Hermiston, being a community that's grown quite a bit since the 80s, about half of our water meters have been installed after 1986. So that was good to see. And then on top of that, EPA has also agreed across the country to allow water systems to conduct a statistically balanced sampling of the meters that predate 1986 that results in a 98% confidence in that what we found is applicable to about 98% of the meters that we're looking at. So that means out of approximately 5,200 residential water meters throughout the city, we'll actually be touching about 350 meters with this project. So just as an example of what that means, that's my house. So you can see, the point here, not super good. But you can see right there, that's the water meter in my front yard. So what we would see is we would see, most likely, the contractor's going to be hydro-excavating, using like a vacuum, go in, suck out a two-foot diameter hole right in front of the water meter and right behind the water meter. For the most part, most of these water meters are going to be similar to that, where they're in a lawn. But some of them will be a little bit more challenging to access. So in this instance, they suck down in the lawn, probably cut the turf out, move to the side, suck down, do their desk, put the dirt back in, put the grass back on, and move on. But they're going to be running into some other situations, I'm sure, where they may have to remove a sidewalk panel and replace that. You know, there may be some challenges associated with some underground sprinkler systems, those types of things. And so it starts to get a little bit more complicated, it's getting to some of those projects. Yeah, so I think that was, you're going to, there will be some impact throughout the community, but ultimately, we hope that it'll move relatively quickly. So this was a, a bit of a challenging project to bid. Usually when we're looking, you know, we can do things like, well, how much does it cost to stick a pipe cost? We know how many of those we have to buy. And you can project what those are going to be. Because of the nature of this project, it's really mainly labor. So it was kind of challenging to project. We were anticipating around $250,000 to accomplish this. We got five total bids. A little bid came in from North Cascade Excavating. I'm only projecting the three lowest there, which you can see they came in just a little under $200,000. And so we're recommending awarding this contract now to North Cascade Excavating for $198,000. Questions?
Has this company done this before?
They have, yeah. Yeah, some of the, we're kind of the leaders, I guess you'd say, on the east side of the Cascades. Mainly from talking with our engineers in the financial area. They work with a lot of the smaller communities around the eastern part of the state. And unfortunately, for a lot of those other smaller communities, you know, they're looking at trying to accomplish something like this, and they don't have the funds to do something like this. So they're, they haven't even begun to look into doing this. A lot of utilities on the west side of the state have already started to do this. They're on the fall. This company has done this for a couple of cities on the west side already.
So they can bring with them maybe some of the lessons learned about do's and don'ts, and maybe what can be done better so that our constituents don't get too upset that holes were dug in front of their yard?
Yeah, I think, yeah, they're going to bring some of that knowledge, expertise. But at the end of the day, I like my green grass, and I don't want anybody to dig a hole in it. You know, there is going to have to be a hole dug in people's yards, and people aren't going to like it, so.
And so are people going to be notified via a letter? How are they going to know that they are part of the 353 homes?
Yeah, so most likely, we'll do door knockers ahead of the work, so. Yeah, we found that to be the most effective in terms of actually getting there. And people aren't, you know, get their mail and think that it's a chain letter or something like that.
Okay, well, mine is completely surrounded with concrete. So then how will that, yeah?
Yeah, it will have to be mitigated. So that's part of the contract, is that if there is something like that that occurs, they have to come in, replace what was there, like for like, with new materials, most similar type materials. And so one of the issues, too, is, you know, how do you determine which of the, out of the 5,200, we've got about half of them that are pre-1986, how do you get to those 350? And so all of those addresses were randomly sampled, basically, so. You may be the lucky winner.
Oh, cool. Okay, thank you.
Others?
So will they get the, the ones that are tested, will they get the results or not? Will they know whether theirs is bad or?
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't share those.
I mean, you know, I mean, something needs to be replaced, okay? I think the homeowner would love to hear about it, that there's need. Seems like a pretty small sample, looking at it. Talking about numbers of, gosh, 13 years, it's like, okay.
Yeah, and that's, one of the other things is I make no warranties as to what the EPA is going to do with this data once we send it to them. So I have no idea what, what they're going to, how they're going to use the data. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't share it with the folks that we've performed the tests with.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think, kind of like Counsel Arden mentioned earlier. I mean, honestly, it's kind of a good idea. It's really good for safety, but it's, quite frankly, it just sucks when you have, you're being told to do something and you don't have funds to be able to accomplish it. And so, great idea. It's just sucks to not, to have an unfunded mandate, essentially.
Right.
And we're paying for it, okay?
Yes.
Unfunded mandates?
Coming out of our utility fund.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but.
Okay, so any other council comments? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this one? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2298 and lay it on the record?
Some. Second.
I think we got Counselor Meyer on the motion, and Counselor Dran on the second. We'll call.
Yes.
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 Correct me if I'm sharing all of us. We all love so much being told what to do. Okay, we are now on to city committee and liaisons. Anybody who's got a care to share?
The Parks and Rec Committee met last Thursday. Senior center design is still underway. It's getting closer and trying to fit in some extra storage on that. Belt Park Greenway Trail is being worked on the design. It is ODOT, with ODOT, right? Yes. The Bark Park Shelter is done. We would like to, once again, thank Marlette. Simran Trail Park, that's the one on top of Peter Lane, is being worked on, being planned out. Skeet Park is on track and looking really, really good, with some color to be added shortly. Horizon Park Playground, that's the one up on top of Fourth Street there. The playground equipment, I think we had a general consensus of what it was going to be this last time, and so we'll get all of that. And then we're going to be initiating a new volunteer recognition dinner, and that is planned to be January 20th. On more dates, there is November 20th, there's a bazaar, and the tree lighting is the 30th with the parade at 5:45. And that was what I.
Excellent.
I saw some surprise in that date time. You weren't aware of that?
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding. I knew what day it was.
Somebody would let it know, yes.
Yes, yes, I I've received an email or two regarding that date and and the availability of a beard. What else to put in? Any other city committees or liaisons?
Faith Base was presented tonight, again, says what we got at the Faith Base meeting, so that's been taken care of. You heard what they had to say. I think one of the things that that the Faith Base is trying to do is to kind of coordinate all these things, because, you know, there are certain churches that provide meals, and there for a while, they were trying to do it where they have a new meal from different churches every day of the week. So so they're just trying to do some coordination of that to make that available to our community. And I think, well, we came up with a great idea that we had our meeting as far as some of the surpluses that schools have, that whether it's feasible to make some of those things available, you know, that through that particular program, I don't know, it's a federal program, so never know whether they could actually have that available to you, because I'm sure there's things you can do and you can't do when you use those programs. So there's some things that we're trying to do some more coordination among the different volunteer groups in the community. So we're all on the same page about duplicating services and, you know, work smarter than others.
Yeah, right. Excellent, excellent. All right, I guess we're on to Council President's Report. I really don't have a whole lot. We've got a lot of stuff coming up here in the immediate future. We've got the tree lighting, we've got Thanksgiving, we've got, and just as a, as a reminder, when we did our, our consent agenda, we did cancel the, the council meeting for Christmas Day. Just, you know, I know it's.
Something's happened other things.
Yeah, there'll be a couple of other things going on on that day, I'm sure. So yeah, tree lighting on the, on the 30th. I, I know that there's a lot of people looking forward to that. It's always a good time. If you can be there, pretty please. I know a guy. And other than that, I didn't write anything down to to bring forward. Council report, Ms. Peterson?
So it's been on Facebook, and it's also on the city's community tab. There's going to be a Thanksgiving Day community meal at the high school. They're looking for volunteers. Contact number is 541-571-1337, but they're looking for volunteers and donations. But that's going to be Thanksgiving Day at the high school, pick up a meal. So yeah, please check that out. It's on the city's website. If you can volunteer or donate or share the information with someone that might need a meal for that day or share one, so.
Tomorrow? I just want to give a shout out to Parks and Rec. I believe it must have been you guys. I was down by Riverfront Park. Usually go down that little trail that kind of loops behind the bridge, and then kind of under, and under the bridge, there's been, there's been graffiti for, for a while, and it's been building. And so I think the last time that I went there, it got painted over. So whether that was Parks and Rec, or whether that was another entity of the city, I really appreciate that. It makes the park look much nicer. So, thank you.
I know some of that graffiti has been there since I was in high school, because it was featured on our, on our yearbook. So just saying. I, I was not one of the ones that applied. I will say that for a fact, because I'm on the yearbook committee at that time. But it was the, there was some that's been there that long, so. Any others? Okay, how about our youth advisor, Janine? What you got for us?
Hello. Not a lot right now. November is definitely a slow month for the high school, but our cross country team, both boys and girls, made it to state, and this is the first time both of them have made, have made it together in the Washington League. Even, and one of our boys placed top 20, so he placed 14th, John Mills. So if you ever see him around town, congrats. Football made it to playoffs. I believe they lost, unfortunately, and volleyball got a second chance as well, but they unfortunately also lost. We are starting our No Shape November competition right now. So, yeah, and then our campfire drive will be starting in about two and a half weeks. And the clouplay, from what I heard, I unfortunately cannot attend very well, and they're starting auditions for their musical.
I did attend the clouplay, and it was amazing. It was, it was, it was, it was very, 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 very good, even though they left out the one line that I love. So. But to make a long story short, any others? That's it. Okay, Mr. Smith, what you got for us?
I, I have nothing else.
Well then, in that case. Another long thing to read here. The City Council of the City of Hermiston will now meet in executive session in the executive session room for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to negotiating real property transactions. The executive session is being held pursuant to ORS 192.660 (2)E, which allows the council to meet in an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the council to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are excluded. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision will be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, the council will return to open session, which the audience may attend. The executive session is scheduled to last approximately 10 minutes. With that, we are recessed. Got everybody back? All right, you ready? All right, we will, is it re- on recess?